By the way, you should apply to the United States of America to the public, to which it states one nation, under our individual liberties and justice for all.
And the Father, we ask that you just be with us this evening and help us to make good decisions for the community and will give welfare to our people, which is thank you, amen.
So item D, approval of agenda. So this is the approved agenda for January ninth being today, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting for July.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for January ninth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item D, citizens' comments. So this, at this point, we allow citizens to comment on any items that they want to. If you're here for rezoning for Pine Street, there will be an open meeting for that, and you will have a chance to comment then. If you're here about any other item, feel free to come up at this point and comment. After that, we would ask that you state your first and last name, where you reside, and you're allowed three minutes, and then that's it. Like I said, if you're here for Pine Street, there will be an open hearing for that, and you'll have your chance to speak for that agenda item. So at this point, anybody has any comments, feel free to step up, first and last name, where you reside, and you're allowed three minutes.
Good evening, fellas. Justin May, twenty-two fifty South Leo. I'm here for the zone twenty-two five and the reconsideration of rezoning of, well, it's R one, R two. Council meeting was talked about the potential to do some type of percentage or whatever. Obviously, still against that. Still feel like kind of doing a little bit of research and seeing how much is going on around town. Feels like, what's the right word? There's a saturation level that seems elevated of duplexes and R two-type stuff. So I would just like you to consider that maybe too much might be too much. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jeff DeWitt. I live from the neighbor of Justin right there, twenty-two ten South Leo. I'm in opposition of, what's the, I don't even know, twenty-two?
Twenty-two five.
Twenty-two five. I think the planning commission got it right the last time by rejecting it, and I think they should consider doing it again. I don't believe this development follows the goals by the community standard comprehensive plan. The broad goal, of course, is to foster a place to live in families, strengthen and enhance the image of the city and location. I don't think this development does that. If you look at how many two-family, two-family plans are within two-point-five miles. Right now, there are seventeen hundred dwelling units within two-point-five miles on the boards. Not, there's some people living in them, some are going to planning commission next week for the county. But that's just, and that does not include Galore. That's just east and north, what we've published just south of Galore. Also, the perception, as Justin's saying, is when is too much. So if you drive around here on a Sunday afternoon looking for homes, when all these developments are done, what are you going to see? You're going to see duplexes. And I understand the developer wants duplexes, and apparently that's the new thing because when you have seventeen hundred dwelling units being put in, that should tell you something. And again, that doesn't include Trails End, the other one that's north, or any of the R fours. It was also said in the analysis that the opposition is basically because we don't want change, and that's not true. I do want change. I do want that developed, just not this developed. If we can make it, single-family homes, twenty percent duplexes. The one at just north forgot, the name of it's up this coming week. There's only eighteen percent single-family in that. Trails End is forty-six percent duplex, which I thought was supposed to be forty, but I don't know how they count it. Councilman Lane said it right when she thought that we're building too much, too soon, you need to take a break, or something. I'm paraphrasing, don't quote me exactly, but that is, I kind of agree with her. I also agree with the mayor that he looked for something different, and what can we do instead of all duplexes? And I know I read something about the developer that said something on the meeting notes, that they were willing to, hey, maybe go to some single-family homes on the west side to separate us. I'm not opposed to that at all. But we do want the developments. We do think it's good. But I think it needs to be thought out just a little bit more. Thank you.
My name's Denise Haig, twenty-three hundred Yale Street, by others. And I'm calling, are talking about the property adjacent to the back of my backyard on Resnickles. The, a city council was talking about, because they didn't vote on it because they wanted rezoners like that? So is it, we're voting on, or we're asking this what it is now, or is it, has it changed at all?
We'll talk about it during the agenda item, but just, at this point, you want to give your three minutes of what you're in favor of or against, then you just sit down. Then we'll go over the agenda item.
Okay, I said, please continue to vote for the property of State R one. Even though I am not in the city limits, I consider Goddard my city. I do not have, I do have the majority of my shopping here. My kids went to school, battered schools, K through twelve here. We had great experience here. My kids are both on their own now, so I have nothing to tie me to this area except that I like this city. The people wanting all this rental property to come in, say the rentals will be teachers, and nurses, and other great renters. I wish that would be a hundred percent accurate. As much as I don't want to see this happen, it will eventually happen. You will just get one renter that has questionable character, and the surrounding renters will just move. They don't have any stake in the property to want to stay around. It may be five years before this happens, but I foresee the city of Goddard of going downhill. I am not fighting to keep Goddard values for me. With no kids in school, it would be easy for me to sell and find somewhere else to live. I'm speaking for the good citizens here in Goddard. The Goddard values you have now is priceless. Please keep your standard values high. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for one, six, seven, eight, third? Come on up.
Hello, my name's Sheri Breckenridge, twenty-three forty-one South Leo Street. I don't know what more else I can say that's been talked about in both of these meetings. I do still think that I would rather see single-family homes, something similar to Arbor Creek, something that's a little bit more upscale. I feel that when we get, it shows a hundred and eighty-nine duplexes times two, you're going to get almost four hundred people. You're going to have so much people congested in a small area with a small amount of roads to get in and out. With the traffic that already comes in from all the areas to go to school, to the high school, I feel like it's going to get, it's be so congested, and that we're going to have a lot of trouble with traffic. I, I do value my home, and I did come out here to take care of my home, and I worry about the upkeep. And I know that there's, the developer says that there's, that they're going to keep it nice, and it has to have this certain protocol of keeping it all up, and longs mode, and the appearances and everything, with that many families. And I can already tell you, my daughter lived in one of these, and I can already tell you, by driving by that in Derby, it looks awful. The fences look awful. It just, it looks awful. And I worry about the appearance. I think what it'll do to all of us. So I just, I don't know. I, I don't see the Brady guy here tonight, but I, I can see that there might be a better chance of vandalism. That many more people coming into the area, so you're going to have to upbeat all that, you know, and spend more time with that. I do want Goddard to grow, like my daughter tells me, you know, she, she works here in Goddard area. And she says, if you, you want Goddard to grow, Mom, you want it to bring in restaurants, you want it to bring in businesses and stuff like that. So you need to support change. But when I showed her what was going to happen here, she was like, oh, my gosh, that's too many people in one place. And I know the mayor said he'd like to have a mix, but I would hope the mix of that would be the majority of single-family homes. Personally, I don't know how somebody would want to come in an area with a nice single-family home and be surrounded by maybe a hundred and fifty duplexes around them. I don't think that's, that doesn't sound like a good thing to me. There's one other thing I was trying to think of. Oh, so I do support, like the other ladies say, I go to Goddard here, I go to Walmart, I support everything I can here in Walmart. I, or in Goddard. I just recently had a membership, and this is way out of the loop, to the Genesis Health Club. I just went to their door yesterday at five o'clock, and it was locked. All the doors were locked. So I'm just saying, I want to support this town, but I want it to grow, and I, but I want it to be a desirable thing for people to want to come here. So I do appreciate your thoughts and listening to me tonight, but please help us do the right thing.
Thank you.
Come on in.
Hi, Sarah Ng, twenty-two fifty Leo Street. I agree with everything everyone has said tonight, and I come with more questions than I hope will get answered this evening in the discussions with our esteemed gentleman here and with Mica. My question is, what is driving the developer to want all R two in this particular piece of land instead of a mix? Where the same developer owner, I'm not sure of the term correctly, but the same group was doing a mix in a different piece of land. So that's something that seems odd, that this piece of land, though it's not on a main artery into the city of Goddard on Kellogg, it's a main artery into Kellogg, but that road, people think of Goddard when they think of, I'm going down Pawnee to Goddard. So they're going to look at that, and they're going to think Goddard. You guys have mentioned wanting to keep Wichita problems out of Goddard and form our own buffer. This is an opportunity to do that, instead of putting duplexes in this area, putting a mix or leaving it single-family homes would add to the prestige. I think Jeff did a good job. When I looked on the website, talking about the planning committee and the planning, sorry, I don't know all of your job titles. I apologize. Don't be insulted. But long story short, the mission on the website for Mica's department was very well said by Jeff. I can't repeat it, but when I looked at that, I thought, does this really represent that? And as we all know, Goddard is predominantly a school district that has a lot of people in education. We have great schools. It's a big draw for this community. It's going to bring you guys and this community more people over time. But if we keep diluting it with people that aren't going to be a stable part of our community, we're going to drive our educators, and we're going to turn Cheney and all of the roads, all the, the people to the west of us into the place that people are going to get away from places like Wichita and Goddard. And that's not what I know you guys are trying to do. I know that's what you're trying to prevent. And I think this is one area where we really need to consider taking that stand and trying to help our community develop into someplace where we still will be able to draw good educators and stable community members. So I thank you very much for your time, and I hope that resolution comes so you guys don't have to keep hearing about this.
Thank you. Anybody else for zoning twenty-two five? No, in one, it's going twice, zoning twenty-two five. All righty. Mr. Jay, at this point, you can put the citizens' comments.
At this point, we'll close with citizen comment.
Thank you very much. This is item E, approval of the minutes. This is approved, the planning commission, regular meeting minutes for December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. As a reflection, we have Ben Healy rezoning P U D, Paul Kelsey A rezoning K, zone twenty-two six, zone twenty-two seven, and zone twenty-two five. And for a motion and second.
I'm going to motion, I'll give the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Item F, border zoning appeals. This is item F point one, so this is three-two-one North Pine rezoning K, zone twenty-two dash eight. This will be the public hearing, which will allow citizens, if they want to comment on it, they can comment on it. So quick background, Kirk Richards has submitted an application for rezoning one lot located off Pine Street with the address three-two-one North Pine Street. Land is currently zoned R one, single-family residential, and is around zero-point-one-six acres. Developer would like to build a duplex on the lot, wants to rezonate to R two, two-family residential. Lot is currently vacant. Final consideration for the rezoning will be before the city council. So we have to go through the golden rules, which you've seen many times, and we'll just go through it. But if you have any questions about any of it, feel free to stop me. Item one, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood? So subject property is classified as residential highest and best use, but it is vacant. Land use to the east is single-family residence detached, the south land use is single-family residence detached, the west land use is single-family detached, north land use is single-family residence detached. What is the current zoning of the subject property that is surrounding neighborhood in relation to request? Land is currently zoned R one, to the east, R one, to the south is R one, to the west is R one, to the north is R one. Is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped vacant as zone factor to consideration? Possibly, I say yes, because building permits for new construction tend to follow new developments. The areas of older housing stocks tend not to have a new economic growth without incentives. And so this area of Goddard is typically comprised of zoning, excuse me, of housing stock around nineteen twenty, nineteen forty, nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy. And typically, we see the concentration of new building permits happening in newer developments, like we've seen over in Elk Ridge or St. Andrews Fourth Edition. Would the request correct an air map patient these regulations know the land is vacant? Is the request caused by change or changing conditions in areas of subject property, and if so, what is the nature and significance of such change? So yes, this is always going to be the same answer for this question. Goddard is experiencing significant residential growth and demand for additional housing of all types, and we see this consistently without stop. Do adequate sewer disposal and water and supply all the necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can it be provided? So yes, sewer and water and street are readily available. There's no petition. This is one lot. This is a vacant lot. There's street, there's sewer, there's water. Everything's already available. It's just simply what we would call infill development. It's just an empty lot where you can put a new project on it. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted or lieu dedications made for right-of-way easements and access control or building setback lines? So no, the land is already platted, and water is in the city right-of-way by the street, and sewer is in the city right-of-way by the alley. So old Goddard's, or this portion of Goddard has got alleys and typically sewers in the alley. So would a screening plan be necessary for existing and all potential uses of subject property? So no screening is required for multifamily or commercial multifamily. According to Article two point one oh two, it's a dwelling of multiple family, meaning that it's got three or more dwelling units. This is a duplex, which is two dwelling units. Is suitable vacant land or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? So zoning for R two accounts for about two-hundred-and-ninety-three acres, which includes all the proposed zoning cases, which is about fifteen percent of the residential land. All R two land is in the process of being developed or is currently developed, or is in the process of going through rezoning at this point. If the requests for businesses or industrial uses are such uses needed, so ten does not apply. This is a residential request. Eleven, is the subject property suitable for the uses in the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Actually, yes, R one does allow for duplexes as a conditional use, and a conditional use simply means it's an acceptable use. That comes before the planning commission to determine if the planning commission wants to add extra conditions on that use. But it is generally considered an acceptable use, but it can also go through the rezoning process. But a, a conditional use has to go through a similar process as rezoning, other than the conditional use is finalized with the planning commission, as opposed to being finalized with the city council. To what extent will the removal of restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detriment affect other property neighborhood? So this question is kind of unique because, you know, when you look at it typically, you assume it's talking about values. So usually I answer with a value answer, but also it could mean cars. So they are going to be adding more cars to the area, but it's a duplex, so that's two units, so potentially four additional cars. But we did a regression analysis of properties within a thousand feet of duplex to determine if the proximity to duplexes affected the value. The study was done on a sample size of about three-hundred-seventy-five properties within Goddard. The results show that it was statistically insignificant, meaning that the proximity to a duplex did not significantly impact the appraisal. The value either in the positive or to negative for the single-family detached house. And what you can see is over here, based on significance value, is zero-point-one-eight, which it has to be zero-point-zero-five or less to be statistically significant. And you can see over here with the R squared, that it's zero-point-zero-zero-four, which you're looking actually for more like a zero-point-seven. And you can see here, because of scatter plot on a line fit, it's all over the place. That means it's got high variability. And so it actually, there's, excuse me, statistically insignificant when it comes to actually impacting value of a house that's in proximity within a thousand feet of a duplex. Would, would, excuse me, would the request be consistent with the purposes zoning district classification, intent, purpose of the regulations? So as mentioned earlier, it is wildly subjective. You can look at this and make a determination that's not in favor of it, or that it is in favor of it. Staff, me and myself, does believe it is in conformance with zoning district purpose, if you look at the zoning district. And then the staff believes it is in development, in conformance with the intent and purpose of subdivision regulations. But obviously, the subdivision regulations are pretty broad, and so is the comprehensive plan, so you can interpret it as you will. But we do believe it is conforming with that. Is the request in conformance of comprehensive plan? So once again, you're going to see page sixteen, promote continued residential development in larger tax base and strengthen the municipal capacity to provide quality public facilities. Page seventeen, the comprehensive plan includes housing directives approved provided for multifamily dwellings, retirement housing, and other specialized housing as required to meet the needs of defined user groups within the community. Page sixty, the comprehensive plan shows the future land use map in this area as residential. They are proposing residential. It's in conformance with the future land use plan. What is the nature of the support or opposition? So as mentioned, I always say this, that your general support comes in desire to increase the tax base of the city as well as diversify the housing stock. I did notice that a gentleman said that general opposition comes in desire of the city to stay relatively unchanged. So I should probably change that and say that general opposition comes in desire for the city to change in a way that's considerate of the composition of single-family detached housing in larger lots. So that may, that makes it a little bit more palatable, because we have heard a lot of people saying that they do want to see change. They want to see a certain type of change. So that's the general opposition. They want to see a certain type of change. Is there any information, are there recommendations on this request available from professional persons or persons, or related expertise which would be helpful in this evaluation? So typically, what I say in this regard is that providing rental properties in traditional form avoids the need for renters to rent single-family detached homes, which are typically considered owner-occupied. Providing renter-occupied dwelling units causes renters to look for renting, or sorry, prohibiting renter-occupied dwelling units causes renters to look for renting single-family detached houses as the only rental option available. This causes people to actively looking for homeownership to compete with speculators to the single-family detached homes. This drives up demand for single-family detached home values, which in turn makes a single-family home more desirable for real estate speculation as an investment opportunity, and this causes bidding wars between potential homeowners and real estate speculators, further driving up the value of homes. This continued real estate speculation pushes homes out of the goods market into the asset market, causing housing bubble, which is prone to higher levels of volatility crashes. So what you see is that renters want to rent in Goddard, either because they're unable to buy a house in the moment, or maybe they want to rent, or maybe they have moved out of a house and they want to rent a property. And so what happens is if there's no rental, traditional rental properties, they'll rent. And so what happens is if there's no rental, traditional rental properties, they'll rent a single-family detached house, and then people who want to own a single-family detached house compete with them, and then that drives up the value of the house. And then home speculators start buying houses because it's deemed as a valuable asset, because the price of appreciation continues to rise. And then that causes a continual cycle, and it can cause issues where people are trying to buy into a appraised, an appreciated market, which makes it difficult for homeownership. So by comparison, does relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss of property value or hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? So developments for residential use does not pose a serious threat to health, safety, and welfare by its use? And it should be mentioned that property value, as far as I can tell, not being an appraiser, but having spoken to both private and county appraisers and running the numbers, I can't see any significant impact on value for single-family detached houses in proximity to duplexes. I had a county appraiser call me yesterday, excuse me, he called me on Friday, excuse me, and he was appraising a property in Cloverleaf, a single-family detached home in Cloverleaf abutting duplexes, and so I asked him, as a private appraiser, does he consider the proximity to the duplex as a factor in the appreciation of value? He said no. So even though it was in the same neighborhood, it's literally over the next fence, right next door to him, it did not impact the value at all, according to this private appraiser. So it wasn't a county appraiser, it was a private appraiser saying it had no impact on the value of the appraised property. So this is a composition of owner-occupied versus renter-occupied properties. So what we did is we took parcel data from the county, which we get every three months, and so this is from December twelfth of twenty-twenty-two. So around December, actually, it's probably around December fourth of twenty-twenty-two. And what we did is we simply compared the property address to the owner address. So the owner address compared to the property address, and we determined that if the property address matched the owner address, it was owner-occupied. If the property address did not match the owner address, meaning that the owner address was in one-two-three North Main, Wichita, or, you know, Chautauqua Falls, or South Bend, you know, you get the idea, then obviously, it's more of a rental property. So after having matched that, then we color-coded it, and we found that about one out of four properties in this area is a rental property. And the yellow is the proposed lot. And part of that, you know, and this is obviously just speculation on the part of city staff, but we do believe that generally speaking, we see more development happening on newer development areas, so you're going to see more building permits happening in new platted land like Arbor Creek, like Cloverleaf, like Rustic Creek, things of that nature. And so you see that the housing composition for the older properties, you're not going to see as much development happening. Granted, most of these properties are already developed, so you're not going to see as much happening, but you are going to see a couple of vacant lots, and perhaps that's why you're not seeing as much infill development for single-family detached housing. This is what's being proposed as a concept. So this would be facing the east, which would be facing Pine Street, so you have a door here, door here in the garages. So a pretty traditional duplex. It's going to have a twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot front yard setback, twenty-foot rear yard setback, and six-foot side yard setbacks. The lot is about fifty feet by one-forty, I believe, or one-thirty, so it meets all the qualifications for an R-two, wouldn't be non-conforming. Financial public notes was given incurred at small cost legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended that the planning commission approve the rezoning request, case number zone twenty-two-a, following the public hearing. At this point, Mr. Chair, you can open the public hearing. We'll receive comments. Once the comments are done, you can close the public hearing and move on to deliberation.
This point, we'll open the public hearing for zone twenty-two-a.
Very good. Anybody at this point, want to talk about zone twenty-two-a for Pine? This would be your time. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Melissa Silver. I live in the property just north of the property we're discussing. I've lived there for thirty years, raised my son here. He went to, from kindergarten through high school. So I have no family ties right now, but, well, I didn't. I stayed and then talked to my two sisters into moving here because of what a wonderful town this is. I really love it here. When they tore down the house that was on that property, the neighbor to the south tried to purchase it, and the city, and I don't have names, I have no idea, told him that he couldn't build on the property because it was too small. There was nothing he could build. There were two other people that came later that year that I went out and spoke with when they were out looking, and they said they were told the same thing, that the property was too small to build on. So I was really shocked to hear not only is it, has it been zoned for a single-family dwelling, that now there's a duplex being talked. I don't know if any of you ever saw the house that was on that property. It was tiny. I don't see how there can be enough room for a duplex and then parking. And my concern is that they're going to be parking on the street. My lot goes right up to their property line. I have an area off my driveway. I don't want cars parked in front of that. Then it's an issue when I come out of my driveway. I'm just concerned with, like I said, the parking. The size of that lot is, to me, too small, but my biggest concern is the parking on the street. Somebody said earlier that a duplex, you think two vehicles per family. Most of the, even the single-family rentals in that area, they have more than two cars. I can cite several houses in that neighborhood that they're parked on the street, they're parked in their yard. Not a good look for Goddard. So those are my concerns, basically, at this time. It's just the size of that lot. At one point, it was, we were told that it was too small to even build a single-family unit on it, and now it's going to be a double, and then the parking that goes along with that. And it's, it's a safe neighborhood right now. If there's cars parked on the street, kids walk up and down that street. There is no sidewalk, so the kids are walking in the street and with cars parked all over. It's a safety issue for the children walking to the school, which is just half a block away from, from that lot.
It's been three minutes. Do you have more?
Yeah, that's, no, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Pine?
Do I need to sign it again?
Yeah, you can go for it, sign it again, might as well.
Yeah, my name is Neese Hike, on twenty-three-hundred South Leo. And I told you my kids are growing. They both, this last year, bought purchased property in Goddard, like the heart of Goddard, the original Goddard. And one of them got notified about this, and he'd be here, be sick right now, but he, one of the, when we talked to you this last, about our development, one of the reasons was you want to get the rental out of the heart of Goddard and get it in a secluded area. And all of it is surrounding is owner-occupied, so why would you want more rental if you're trying to get the rental out of the original Goddard? It just didn't make sense to me. But, and when I showed my son, he just purchased it this last January, and he's remodeling it, so I'm there a lot, it's his property. That street is already parked a lot, and there's a lot of cars already on that side. And like she said, there's no sidewalks. You got, you know, kids, you know, going there, so there's no way for them to, you know, there's just, there'd be too much traffic, I think with four more cars in that area. And, what else? But he, when I told him about my, what all developments you guys were doing, my son was like, gosh, I just wish I would have seen all this before, because he was thinking of a property not in Goddard. And he was, now wishes he would have bought that property instead of here. So I think you're going to lose a lot of young people that want owner-occupied homes, because he's twenty-two years old now, and so he's wishing he would have moved in a different area if we have all these duplexes and rental property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just a concerned citizen. That lot you're talking about, putting duplex on, by the time you build the duplex, it can go two ways. You can have a family move in there, four, two teenagers, mom and dad. Everybody's got a car, one side and one side. That's eight cars, possibly six cars. It's one-car garage per side. And it can go the other way. A family can move in there with little kids. There's not going to be hardly any room for the kids to play. They'll be out in the street playing, or they're going to have to walk to the park to play, but you still got traffic, but this duplex built this little bitty lot. Now, if something has to be built there, I would say put a house there, a single-family dwelling. If you have to build something there, put a single-family dwelling. And like the lady said over here, it's going to be tight even if you do that. So it's things to take consideration. Once that duplex is built and the traffic's there, the people move in, like I say, teenagers, they got cars, they're, you know, speeding up and down the road, how kids are. So that's a very congested area. I mean, if you go there on a summer day, there's kids walking up and down that street without a duplex built there. So something to consider on that end. Like I say, a single-family dwelling would look really nice there, if it has to be something. Just my opinion as a concerned citizen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk about three-two-one North Pine? All right. Mr. Chair, at this point, you can close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing for zone twenty-two-a.
At this point, the recommendation is still to approve the rezoning request for zone twenty-two-a, and on admission, just feel free to deliberate amongst yourselves.
Michael, what's the minimum size of lot for?
So in an R-two, you can do thirty-five by a hundred on a two-unit, and then at the minimum for a single-family is fifty by a hundred.
And just to address, I mean, they said that, you know, this is, this lot was looked at before, at those.
I don't know how long ago that was, that could have been, could have been, I don't want to say how long ago that was, I'm not sure.
I just did not, those, those requirements have changed within.
Yeah, we've done so many ordinances for, for changing the subdivision regulation for zoning classifications that, I mean, if it was, I've been here since, started in December of twenty-eighteen. So if we changed the R-two, which we did in twenty-nineteen, if somebody came to me in twenty-nineteen after we changed it, that would have been acceptable. But no one's asked me about three-two-one North Pine since I've been here, so if it was ten years ago, they probably were right, it probably was probably too small. It would have to have been in an R-two, it might have been sixty or seventy by a hundred back then, before we changed it. So yeah, it's possible that when they approached the city back then, they were correct, it was too small. That was a concern that actually came up by Commissioner Klein. The concern was that if a tornado came through central, the central part of Goddard, knocked a bunch of houses over, and we start to rebuild, we would find a bunch of nonconforming uses, because a lot of these lots are too small to accommodate the housing that's on them. And so the concern has always been, well, we want to kind of bring them down a little bit, get the lots a little bit smaller, acceptable lot sizes to be smaller so that people can build on smaller lots if they need to, because there are a lot of nonconforming housing right now, lots that are too small to accommodate the house, according to the zoning classic issue. So we've shrank the size of R-one and R-two, and we introduced R-four and rural urban intent for these reasons, to accommodate different land use concepts on different blocks. No one's approached me about three-two-one North Pine before, so it must have been before my time.
Can I ask you a quick question?
I'm sorry, as soon as the comments are over. At this point, it's deliberation of the planning commission. My office is downstairs, so you can talk to me anytime.
Concerned discussion?
I think we've had discussions with the, with the city council at different points about what would be the best locations for R-two. You know, if we're going to try to maintain an area or develop an area or allow an area to be developed into multi-family unions, any multi-family units, you know, the heart of Goddard, where the commercial district is, the business district is in downtown, is part of that area that we were looking at, we discussed before, as far as being, allowing that usage to happen. I understand it's close to the schools and... It seems like this would fit the area. The lot does seem a little small to me. But I mean, if we've got the requirements met and that's for zoning regulations, I don't have a problem.
It's tough to get somebody to want to build a brand-new single-family dwelling
On that size of a lot?
In, in those areas. Or that size of a lot.
Mr. Parks?
It's tough. It's small. It is a small lot.
How wide is it?
Yeah, do you have width on the unit or on the?
It's, I think, so it's six-foot side yard setbacks, twenty-five, I think, in the rear, and twenty-five in the front. And I think the lot is fifty by one-thirty or fifty by one-forty. That's the lot size, so the width is fifty by one-forty. So it's meaning the bare minimum on all aspects of the, of the buildable envelope, if you will, which is the setback requirements.
Typical St. Andrews seasons that, those are eighty-foot lots.
Usually, traditionally, it's seventy-five by a hundred on a lot of those, seventy-five by one-twenty sometimes, but we had seasons in St. Andrews when they were platted, they had an R-one zoning classification, which was at a minimum seventy-five back then as a width, so seventy-five by one-hundred was the minimum for season in St. Andrews when they were going in. So that's why, and then you have, you know, the setbacks for that, which are six-foot by, twenty-five by twenty is the minimum for the setbacks, and you can go bigger, you just, that was the minimum, so.
And what the lot size is, we still had to come up with a print to fit on there.
Yeah, I believe in your agenda, Papi, you should have something that, you know, is show the concept image in there?
No, the concept image is, I think, we saw it on the show. I don't understand either.
It's basically this. And then, as mentioned, they're going to be putting it within twenty-five on the front for the front setbacks. And then, as mentioned, they're gonna be putting it within twenty-five on the front for the front setbacks, six on the sides and twenty-five on the rear.
It just looks narrow and deeper.
And everything in that block is R one, zoned R one at this time. Correct?
Yes, well, most of the zoning around here is R one. I got the, I don't have a zoning map up right now.
Yeah.
But the majority of this is R one. You know, Main Street's right here. So when you get further north, you're gonna start getting to the commercial district.
Right.
But there is single family detached housing over here. So what we were looking at is traditionally, single family detached housing in this area as a percentage, as, as owner occupied versus renter occupied. So did the property address match the owner address essentially? Or was it elsewhere?
But it's still all, for the most part?
For the most part, R one.
There's really no R two in there. They're just renting their R one.
Yeah, I mean, over here, once you get out, outside of this area, over here, you're getting R two, which is, this is Easy Street, where you have, excuse me, Medical Lodge. And then over here, there's South Street past San Jose, which is, duplex is down here, which is R two. And then you have an R three, which was approved right over here by the planning commission back twenty nineteen for that triplex, which is right off of Cedar. There's a conditional use permit over here for a duplex that was approved. And then you have the duplexes going over here. You can see the aerial image for the, you have those quadplexes right here. And then you have, which is, this is all R three. And then you have the five duplexes going up over here. And you have the school district. I believe this is several mobile homes right here. And then the school district.
It's gonna look more localized, urban renewal. Rather than just having empty lots out there and nothing ever built on it.
Any discussion? Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the rezoning request of zone twenty-two eight.
Do we have a second?
We got a motion and no second?
Not either.
Is there an alternative motion?
Can we delay this to the next one?
You can. You can delay it.
I'd make a motion that we delay the decision to the next commission. I have a motion for that.
Do we have a second?
So we'll just table it till next month?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Zoning has been tabled until next month. This is item F two. This is reconsideration of rezoning case number zone twenty-two dash five. So not so quick background in this case, but Boston Company has submitted an application on behalf of developer Paul Kelsey Cruz zoning one tract of land from R one, single family detached, to R two, two-family residential. Land is generally located on the northwest corner of one sixty-seven Street and Pawnee, West Twenty-third Street. The land is around sixty-nine plus minus acres and intended to be developed into duplexes. The land is not abutting to greater corporate city limits, was not abutting it, which required to be annexed as an island annexation per KSA twelve five twenty C. City council reviewed the request on October third. Per state law, agreed to resolution requesting the finance facts. From the board of county commissioners, the BLCC determined that the tract of land is a reasonable annexation. BLCC met on November second and nine a.m. and determined based on the facts presented to them that this request was reasonable, approved the request for annexation. Once annexed, the land defaults to R one, single family, at which point the developer can ask for rezoning hearing to change the classification. Planning commission denied the recommendation for rezoning request with a unanimous vote against the consideration at the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting. This required a supermajority of the vote of the city council to approve the rezoning, which is a four out of five member voting in favor of the ordinance for rezoning. On January third, twenty twenty-three, the city council decided by a majority of vote to send the rezoning request back to the planning commission to ask for clarity on the decision by the planning commission to determine what the planning commission felt was an acceptable land use composition in this area. This request is to ask the planning commission what they feel is an acceptable number of duplexes and single family area or other type of land uses permissible under R one and R two. Developer noted that on January fifth, twenty twenty-three, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission approved a similar development with an HOA and that passed the MAPC with eleven to one. This comes from article thirteen point one oh four three. So we're not gonna go through the golden rules because you guys already did. There's no public hearing because that was already happened. This is, comments are over. So this is just deliberation amongst the planning commission at this point. So one oh four point three, this says what happens if the council sends it back to the com, the planning commission. So if you return such a recommendation back to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve it or disapprove, so the governing body failed to approve or disapprove. So it's coming back to you guys. And the statement is from the city council, why do you guys, what do you guys wanna see in that area? So that's the, that's the statement that they wanna know. They wanna know, is there a minimum or maximum number of duplexes or single family that you guys would like to see in that area? So zero duplexes, ten percent, twenty percent, forty percent, all single family, you know, fifty percent duplex, fifty percent single family. What you guys would like to see in that area? And then you would either make a motion to accept the rezoning based on that recommendation or you can say that you wanna keep your original recommendation of denial. And either way, that statement will go before the city council saying that this is why the planning mission is going with their original recommendation of denial, or this is why the planning commission is going with a renewed recommendation and their statement. And then it'll go to city council for final deliberation for the last time at that point. So that's what's happening here. If the governing body returns the commission's recommendation, the commission, being you, obviously, the planning commission, after considering the same, may submit its original recommendation, which would be the denial, giving the reasons therefore, submit a new amended recommendation, given the reasons, of course, being the same. Upon the receipt of such recommendation, the governing body by a simple majority thereof, so originally it's a supermajority, four out of five, now it's going back to city council after planning commission denied, it'll be a simple majority, which is three out of five. So that's to be noted. May adopt or may revise or amend and adopt such recommendation by the effectuated ordinance or in need, or in need, take no further action thereon, meaning that just deny it. The commission fails, if the commission fails to deliver a recommendation to the governing body following the commission's next regular meeting being today, after receipt of the governing body's report, which I've just given, the governing body shall consider such course of inaction on the part of the commission as a re-submission of the original recommendation and proceed accordingly. So that means if you guys make no deliberation or if we fail to consider this agenda item today, they'll just simply say planning commission still wants to move forward with a denial. And that's what they'll do. So at this point, this is what the developer is proposing now as an amended plan for that area. He's proposing putting a hundred and twenty single family homes over here on the west side to buffer the Marie Meadows. They're gonna keep the existing hedgerow, propose stormwater detention over here, propose stormwater detention, keep the existing hedgerows. Eighty-one duplexes will put on the east side, which would be forty percent because there's a total of two hundred and one. He's gonna put a berm over here on the south side to buffer that as a visual buffer. And the developer is hoping that this would be acceptable before the planning commission and the city council as an adequate compromise to what has been proposed. Financially, none. Legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended that the planning commission consider the following options. One, make a motion to resubmit the original recommendation of denial specifying the reason for the denial. Or two, make a motion to approve the rezoning of modifications specifying the composition of land uses within. And those would be the two motions. You could also potentially make a motion to deny it, but say that you're accepting of why, of what's been proposed. There's several options here. Ideally, this would be one of those two. You're either gonna say that you're gonna make your original motion of denial and state why you're making your original motion of denial, even with what's been proposed. Or you can say you're making a motion to approve the rezoning with what's been proposed as an adequate compromise. Either way, there would have to be a listed statement by the planning commission as what you think is adequate for that area so that the city council can make a deliberation based on that. At this point, it's deliberation amongst the planning commission. All right, Mr. Parks, what's your opinion?
Forty percent. Yeah, I, I I, I would, I would probably propose to deny rezoning.
You know what, as far as the percentages are here, or a hundred percent, you don't want any.
I think it could be considered at twenty percent.
We do have an agent for the applicant if you do have questions.
I liked that they pushed it to the, to the east side, so you do have that stepping density. But forty percent seems, still seems excessive.
Maybe?
I still think the population of the general area that this is in is, is already heavily, the duplexes just on the, over the, the east side of a hundred and, a hundred and thirty-five. I know that's out of Goddard area, I understand that. But I mean, like he was, the gentleman was saying, you know, this area is, it's a hundred duplexes. I, I think we have to pick and choose where we are allowing multi-family units. And if we can create a space or a zoned area for R two classifications, you know, and still maintain growable area for R one. You know, city, Wichita is up to our doorstep already. So we wanna make sure that we have something available for future developers that wanna actually build some, some single family homes. While we have agreed on areas that have, you know, to, to build an R two or multifamily, whatever zoning, I think we have to maintain some space for R one. So I would, I would still motion to deny.
Does it have a percentage?
Yes.
I agree with what they said. My, my spin, when we met last time, we talked about several other properties. And in those, we agreed to the duplexes and agreed to some multifamily and stuff. And to me, that, where those were, it made sense. It felt like it fit there and stuff like this. I agree with what Doug said about that area. It doesn't seem like duplexes. I, I like the idea of the conversation about how much, setting percentages of how much duplexes. But I think that has a slippery slope to it too, because you have other, well, you have other developments and not every development. Would a flat percentage idea be the right way either? So, I don't know. I agree kind of. So I think I would probably still deny.
Is there any, any way to do a lot split and have the east portion of this piece of the R two and keep the, the west three, four of it? Is that, is there potential for that? So that we kind of have that control? Or is the, because right now, the whole thing has to go to an R two. I mean, that's what they're proposing.
Yeah.
The entire, however many acres.
R two, I, you could, I wanna talk about that. I'm not sure exactly if you could, I mean, you can reduce your request. We did that with Bridger at Maple. The original request was for true tracts of land. And then the developer said, wait a minute, like, well, I need a backtrack. So you can, you can pull the rezoning request back a little bit. You can amend it so that it's less. But you can't ask for a rezoning request to be more. So in this case, you could ask for an approval of just the east side of the rezoning, but it's difficult because the developer had asked for the whole thing. And so you would have to approve the rezoning saying that you would only want the east side to be rezoned with the remainder staying R one. That's kind of what you're, what you're asking.
Or deny it and ask them to come back with the request of a portion of it that's R two.
Right.
And I would, Mr. Parks, I think twenty percent would be more of a number to me than forty. Going back in discussions, pursue the council to consider.
So are we thinking that twenty percent? I mean, if this came back before you and you saw it at twenty percent duplexes, would that be an acceptable amount? Or would that still be a no vote? Because I hear a split, twenty percent and zero. So that's kind of where, if the developer did come back with a proposal for rezoning at twenty percent and eighty, would that still be a no vote? And that's kind of what council wants to know.
And it's hard telling because we're eleven thousand people. You know, right now, you're looking at a fifty-fifty split kind of this. So it would be tough to say whether it'll pass or not, even if it won't.
So maximum of twenty percent would be for that area, do you think would be acceptable? Do you have any questions for the agent for the applicant?
The berm would be nice. I like seeing that. But a lot of newer additions are putting up the berms for aesthetics. Not necessarily blocking anything off, just makes people feel a little more secluded. I do like the fact they're protecting the west side too, so.
Looking for a motion or a second or not?
At this point, yes, the discussion's out there. We need a motion.
I wanna make a motion to deny the, the rezoning request of twenty-two five.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Motion is denied. We'll transfer over to council on the seventeenth. Because Martin Luther King Day is on the sixteenth, so we have to, we have to do it on Tuesday. So it'll be, the seventeenth will be the council consideration for zone twenty-two dash five. So thank you very much. Item G, old business, there is none. Item H, this is new business. So this is item H point one, sign regulation for amendment C two, general business district. So quick background, the signed regulations in the city of Goddard help to regulate types and number of signs existing in city limits. These regulations can be changed with the approval of the planning commission and the governing body. Due to a large request for sign variances, the planning commission is reviewing the possibility of change in the general business district. Signed regulations only to reflect the changes desired by businesses. These changes include increased height maximum, increased gross square footage and a maximum number of wall signs. So this is article seven, sign, section one oh four point four, shall be amended to read as follows. One oh four district regulations for four, C two, general business district. So green is what I'm proposing. Red is what it's currently. And so what we've seen a lot of recently is for additional wall signs. We've actually denied some people additional wall signs, which I wasn't sure if that was reasonable or unreasonable. But the way it's written right now is that you're getting basically one wall sign. And so some people have asked, for example, Camp Al. And so some people have asked, for example, Camp Alloa wanted a wall sign on the west side and one on the south side of their building. And we said, you can't have one on the west side and the south side. It's got to be one or the other. And so they picked the south side and got rid of the one on the west side. But when you look at the west side of that wall, it was just blank. And so I didn't know if a wall sign made sense over there or not. And was it just the regulations that were prohibiting that? Or would have that actually helped improve the quality of the building, the marketability of the building? So that was a question that came up. So, and so we said two over here, and except the wall signs, they'll be allowed to have two per wall face. So this allows two wall signs per wall face if the planning commission felt that was acceptable. Because then you could have wall signs on the back if they wanted to, or on the sides, and not just on the front. And maybe that would help market the business more. We had the, I forget the name of the business, but it's the chiropractic business right next to Goddard Family Dental Street. They wanted to put up a wall sign on their west side, but they already had a wall sign on their south side. So I told them, no, not without the variance. So they just simply withdrew the request because it was non-conforming. So the question is, should we allow more wall signs? Then number two, of course, I increased the maximum gross square footage to 500. I know that's a bit excessive, but I wanted to see if perhaps that was too much, too little? We've had so many requests for increased gross square footages. Right now, the maximum is 150. And almost every one of our wall signs, excuse me, every one of our monument signs have exceeded that almost universally. They've always requested for a taller sign, more gross square footage, whether it's Brahms or Genesis or anybody. And so I'm shooting for 500 here, assuming that that will help accommodate everybody and that we won't actually see that 500, but who knows? And so that's kind of where, should we bring it down? And that's kind of where, I leave that up to the planning commission and city council to make that determination. And obviously, maximum height. The maximum height has always been 10 feet in the central business district. And almost universally, we've always seen the monument signs, they want to go higher. So we've seen so many variances for that as well. So I put 35 feet, and then that's pretty much it. Everything else that's black stays the same.
35 feet so far to this point has been the max we've approved anyways, am I correct?
Genesis was 40.
That's right, forgot about that one.
Genesis was 40.
Brahms was 35.
But I did hear from a developer that he's actually pulling, even though he got the variance request for the Genesis sign, since he wasn't able to locate it exactly where he wanted to because of accommodating infrastructure, water lines and such, that he's actually reevaluating where he wants to put the sign. And it might actually, it might actually drop and get smaller, simply because he's not able to get the ideal visual spot for it.
So most of these signs are on the Kellogg corridor that we're talking about.
Yeah, almost, I mean, anything that's central business district generally is going to be in the Kellogg corridor. Not always, but most of them are. The corridor is, you know, obviously 54 US 400. And all of these businesses have historically asked for bigger and taller signs to try to catch people that are going from 60 to 50 to 60 again as they pass through. That's why I think if you remember what that, back when, 2020, when we had the Brahms meeting on Zoom, the developer was saying that the more gross square footage that he has on his sign is directly attributable to the amount of sales they make. So Brahms that has a 350 square foot sign makes more sales than a Brahms that has a 250 square foot sign, according to their numbers. And so that's why he was asking for variance for that reason. Granted, most of the businesses are set back as well, but with the frontage road. Because you have a frontage road setting the businesses back even further.
The 500 square foot doesn't bother me, because if we're talking monument signs, kind of like the 21st Amaze area, where they have one monument sign and multiple people on it, you're going to need that size.
This is all open to whatever you guys want to see. This is just kind of general.
So it is two on the building and plus one freestanding.
You would get, basically, you have two wall signs, two projecting signs, two roof signs, two awning canopy or marquee signs. Except the wall signs, you're allowed to have two per wall face. And so you can have, potentially, if you have a building with four sides, you would have two per, you'd have eight, two, 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 two. Typically, though, what we're doing here is we're kind of going big, assuming that cost is going to bring them back.
Yeah.
And this is to avoid you guys seeing single variance.
Right. What stops us from having the liquor store?
Well, liquor store, that liquor store example, they have 100 signs on that.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, high dollar lit sign would be something junkies.
The two still stops there.
Yeah, two is not 100. I don't know how many signs, I'm making that 100 up, there's a lot of signs.
Probably not far off.
Yeah. Every time I drive by and I do, I am picturing Doug Van Amber, and he's crying, you know.
He was griped about that.
I remember it perpetually. Goddard Sports and Power, I think it was, and they wanted five. That's what they wanted, they wanted those five signs, I think, was the variance they wanted for Outdoor Sports and Power over there next to, next to, close to Central.
What is, I can't remember what we approved on that. But that made sense when he was asking.
Yeah, he wanted them all on the front, none on the side. So he didn't want any on the, on the east or the west or the north. He wanted them five on the front, but I think he got five on the front.
But he was wanting to promote the stuff he was selling.
That's right.
Still.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, he did want to promote certain types of name brands.
Right.
And as mentioned, Camp Alloa wanted one on the side, I said none of them. And then that business right next to the Goddard Family Dental wanted one on the side, and they said, no of them. So there's some, there's some requests that you guys just never see, because it just can't, it can't go through there. And the Starbucks, which is on this agenda item, wants a, wants a 30-foot sign, I believe. But the face of that is only like 80 square feet, so, but they do want a 30-foot, 30 or 35-foot sign, so.
I guess I don't have a problem with the two per side. And we're guessing we're going big, but it seems a little extreme if you're talking all the way around.
Is that a cumulative lift, the 500 square feet, is that all of the signs?
No, it's just for each individual face. Yeah.
But if you're talking a limited sign, not a whole lot of people, put more than one 500 square foot, because of cost. It's just outrageous.
Truth.
The closest we've seen is that Genesis, we got very close to 500, but that was...
It's a big facility.
It was huge, it was a huge sign. It was projected at being around half million for the sign.
I still don't think he was going to pump out one for each side either. Especially, a half million dollars for a 500 square foot sign, you're probably going to get one.
And what remains, we're talking about, was there someone mentioned about they didn't allow pole signs anymore?
We still don't allow pole signs.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's...
Everybody's grandfather to him that currently has one, correct?
Unless they sell the business, yeah. A leasing is not the same. And that's, that's what came up with Goddard Wine and Spirits. I was telling him, you have to change your sign. And then I found out that he didn't actually buy the building, he was leasing the building. But if there's a change in ownership, he would have had to change to a monument sign. But everybody now who's being, who's proposing signs, they have to be monument signs. Starbucks is proposing a monument sign. They wouldn't let them do a pole sign. Nobody's allowed to do pole signs anymore. And this doesn't affect any of that, there's no secret text.
You just basically got to have a base to it, rather than just a single pole, you can do two poles with it.
Yeah, there's certain definitions of...
Brick base.
It's got to have 50% of a base, 50% of the wall, of the face. And so you can have, you need two brick bases, and there has to be minimum space in between, so you have to have something that fills it in. So you could have two poles, but they would have to have a base that, as you were saying, it would have to be 50% at least of the face of the building, of the sign.
Basically, you can't wind up with like this, a single pole.
Yeah.
And one big sign at the top, 35 foot there.
Exactly, and then it'll fill that in generally. I mean, there can be some poles showing.
Right.
But the base helps, is a factor, is a huge factor there. This is all open to whatever you guys want to see, if you want to see the amendments to it.
Doug, what do you think?
35 feet, I think is acceptable. Gross square footage, 500 square feet. Can't even think of what that would be comparable to.
As I said, the Genesis sign that we approved would have been pretty close to that.
It's as close as you can get.
In my personal opinion, we've already kind of made an exception, thrown that out, but yeah, he can do it.
One of the statements on the variance is that it's unique to a lot. But if every business has, you know, an exception, it no longer becomes unique in that way. And so it becomes hard to justify the variance anymore. And so to avoid that, that's why we consider amending to something.
Right.
And that's not, that's not unusual, it just seems that certain areas might be prone to more exceptions in something than... That's why we're not changing any of those zoning classifications, we're just changing C2. We're not changing the central business district or R1 or R2, it's just C2, because that's the one that we see most of the variance requests is for C2 general.
In your personal opinion, will this be beneficial in trying to attract a sit-down restaurant?
That's hard to say. I think that a sit-down restaurant, if it was in the Goddard Galleria, probably, because they're going to ask for this. They're going to ask for at least 35 feet, because they're going to want to market to cars on 54. And that's just, that's just what we hear everybody say over and over again.
Where he stopped from that, putting commercial land over there.
Ben Healy is a PUD though, so it's kind of defined a little bit differently. Even though some of those lots are going to have a C2 allowance, technically, a PUD allows for that discretion. But as you say, most of this, even though we're shooting big, we're trying to allow for that, cost is going to bring them down. And so that's where Ben Healy has actually pushed back from 54 until 54 actually does something. So I mean, he might ask for a bigger sign, but having spoken with him already, I think he's going to try to market as close as he can to 54 already. So I doubt he's going to try to do, the 500,000 signs just seems outrageous. I mean, even for Genesis, that was, that was an exorbitant cost to pay half a million dollars for a sign for marketing. And that's as big as we got, 40 feet with, I think it was 430 or 450 square feet of actual sign face. And so that was incredibly high. I think that's an exception, because Genesis is the biggest commercial development we're probably going to have for the next 20 years. Most people are asking for 35, 30 feet, maybe 150, maybe 200 square feet. Brahms wanted a bigger pink ice cream cone, so they wanted more than 150 on that one.
Is it more to the height of the sun or the square footage, you think?
Both, because most of those variants that have come forward have either exceeded the 10 feet or exceeded that 150, or both. And so that's why, that's what we're seeing a lot of. People want to go bigger than 150 square feet and taller than 10 feet.
Trying to draw people in, even though they know the barriers.
And it just avoids variances over and over again, variance and variance requests and variance requests.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'd make a motion if we approved the amendments to the signed regulations for the city of Goddard.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Now, now let the city council for a final consideration. And small publication cost group is... This is item H.2, site plan for Starbucks coffee shop. So Sam Malinowski, are you here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. SM Engineering has submitted a site plan application for a Starbucks coffee shop located at 18731 West Kellogg Drive, just to the west of Brahms. All commercial buildings require site plans, which need to be approved by the planning commission. All site plans must show elevations and any facade coverings must be approved by the planning commission if they are proposing metal-type buildings. After the planning commission, each commercial building must have architectural engineering plan reviewed by the Metropolitan Area Building Construction Department, MEBCD, before they can pull a building permit. So the planning commission is reviewing the site plan for new Starbucks coffee shop. Address is 18731 West Kellogg Drive. Land use is restaurant, coffee shop. Building floor area is 2,200 square feet. Percent building coverage to 4.8. Building height 20. Parking, one space per 2.5 seats, and they're proposing 34 parking spaces. This is the lot, so here's Brahms, and this is the lot that they're, that they've chosen. Here's their site plan for their monument sign. You can see it's 30. And here is about 78, 90 for the actual face of the sign for its square footage. Here's where they're proposing some, a wall sign here and a wall sign here, traditional emblem. This is the light coverage at night. Here's a portion of the drive-through, which you can see here. This is the building, it's about 2,200 square feet. So it's a little bit bigger. If you're familiar with the Starbucks office central, that one's about 1,950 square feet. So this one's 2,200, so it's a little bit bigger. Here's the drive-through area, so it's a big drive-through. This would be blocked and covered dumpster, our requirements. Here's West Kellogg Drive, so there's that frontage road over here, and the private drive over here, so that will have two access points. Landscaping. Here's elevations. So it's not actually a metal building that they're proposing, but just to make, you see all the elevations and the material composition. Financially, none. Legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended the planning commission approve the site plan for the new Starbucks coffee shop, contingent upon facade approval and signed regulation amendment by the city council. So I always ask you guys to just make sure you're happy with the site plan as much as possible, especially the facade. In this case, the most prominent facade would be the north one.
Fibers cement and drive it.
Agent for the applicant?
Pardon?
Instead of mainly looking at fibers cement and drive it?
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
I've been stating first and last name. Oh, yeah, Sam Malinowski, 5507 High No Sir, Manhattan. Yeah. I think that's what it says, I'm not the architect, so.
That's what I ran up.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty typical, what they do though.
There's a bench schedule on the side there.
And the way to do is, we're kind of, and we're doing the shell, and then Starbucks will come in with the inside finish, and then the signs on the side, there will be some signage on the side of buildings.
So the way the drive-through is built, that big, the way it goes backward from the building so far, I'm assuming that's built so it doesn't have as big of a step, like, you mentioned on that central, they have a stacking problem.
Yeah.
So are they doing that to help alleviate the congestion?
No, they're very conscious of the stack, and they give, you know, gas point.
If planning commission approves this and you take it to MEBCD, how long will it take you for completion? Do you think, do you have any idea, before you get the shell out?
They want to open it this year, so I'm sure they're going to start April, which is probably.
First and third, I thought it was kind of strange to have another coffee shop, but then boy, pay attention around. Wesley and Kellogg, and yet Starbucks.
That's right.
They just dropped a Nash Brothers right beside it, and then if you go a quarter mile north, there's Scooters. Better company.
There's some literature out there that coffee, it's not unique to coffee businesses, but they tend to play off each other. So usually, if there's a demand and it's not met by one business, then it can spill over to other businesses. It can be, it was a capture effect. That's not unique to coffee shops, but for example, you'll see that there's a, natural grocers will move in right next to... grocers are moving right next to a Whole Foods, right next to, um, you know, um, a Green Acres or something of that nature. They're in general close proximity to each other because they capture a similar audience. Usually it's hard for one business to capture a hundred percent of the demand.
I think the building looks good.
Yeah.
Size looks good. Plenty of parking in the lab, and you said they do have screens for the dumpster?
Yes.
Great. I'd like to make a notion that we approve the site plan for the new Starbucks coffee shop contingent upon the facade approval and sign regulation amendment by the city council.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. This is item H point three, Bridger and Maple final plat. Um, so a quick background, Baughman Company has submitted an application on behalf of the developer firm, Angel Fire UW LLC, for a final plat for the development located in Maple between one hundred and sixty-seven and twenty-third. This development is four hundred and seventy-nine lots that have been rezoned as R two for the building of duplexes and some single family detached housing. Planning commission approved the preliminary plat on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Final stormwater engineer is under review by city engineer Baughman Company. Planning commission is now considering approving the final plat for the Bridger at Maple. After consideration by the planning commission, the final plat will go to the city council for final review and approval. Planning commission's considering approving a final plat for Bridger at Maple Development, number of lots, a hundred and seventy-nine, zoning is R two, two-family residential, duplexes, single-family, gross acreage is around seventy-two, square feet is three point one million. So this is the final plat, it's broken into two sections because it's very north-south, so I have to break it into, you know, I can't do a horizontal image on this one, but these lots have all been dedicated to, uh, single-family detached housing. Reserve here, reserve here, that's to buffer the housing that's in county over here. There's a southern portion. It was commented by, uh, Commissioner Klein over the phone that there's only one entry point, he had concerns about that, and that was brought up with the engineer, we talked about that, but the issue here is that since it is so north-south and this is not part of development, this is private over here, that only gives you a certain amount of space to actually punch an entrance onto it, and when you have Maple going forty miles per hour, you really can only introduce another access point into the development every three hundred and fifty feet, and so that doesn't give you enough space to put another entry point. And so they've opened this road up a little bit just in case for emergencies, and this portion over here in case of emergencies, and if potentially future development, you could tie this road in to the future development and then have that connect onto Maple down the road. Reserves are dedicated for drainage, stormwater retention. Financially none, legally approved as a form. It is recommended the planning commission approve the final plat for the Bridger at Maple Development. Uh, if there are any questions for me or agent for the applicant, we do have Baughman here to represent him.
I think the, the one entrance is actually fairly normal. Talia is one way in, one way out.
Yeah, I think they have a gate, though, on the western portion of Talia, that it could be opened by the fire department.
Not that I've seen, is there one?
I think there is. Yeah, they have an entry, the promenary, the prominent entry point, which is the big Talia, the monument, everything else, but then if you go further to the west, there's actually a gated cul-de-sac there that I think that you can get into if it's an emergency.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Granted, that's switched off, so. Technically, our subdivision regulations don't require access, multiple access points if there exceeds a certain amount of lots. This is just what we traditionally try to look at as good, proper practice, to try to consider, you know, the situation that we ran into with Pate Edition twice already, which is just that, there's one way into Pate Edition, there's one way out, and we've had electric line go down blocking Pate, and then we had, uh, a police incident at Pate that blocked entrance, and people worried we'll get in and out, and so we just, that, that issue came up, and we had to, people had to go through the farm land, so we, we do take that into account, but, um, at least this way, it's planned for the future for there to be a way to get it out.
Done, done, done. What do you think?
I think it's good.
Good? All right. We give a motion then?
I will make a motion to approve the final plat for the Bridger Maple Development.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item A, it's a staff report, so just quick reference, the chair and vice chair nominations usually happen in January, but we wanted to give you guys time for citizens' comments and rezonings and everything else, so we're gonna push it into February. Um, uh, Mayor Zimmerman and city council have, have made a note that they want to have a joint meeting with the planning commission, because they feel like it's very beneficial to discuss growth, the approach of Wichita rental properties, long-term development and everything else in between. So either planning commission will host the city council, or the city council will host planning commission, that's to be determined, and so we'll try to figure that out, you guys will be fed and everything else that goes with that, and it should be a lively conversation, but we will let you know as soon as that's available. Other than that, it'll be, I'm Jay, planning commission comments.
Is there a, I understand there's a vacancy at the, at the city council?
Correct.
Are they appointed, or what's their intention to have?
So they sent out, the city has sent out, um, notices, I, I'm not sure, Patrick, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Uh, yeah, so there's an application on the website, the city website, to apply, to be considered, to be appointed for the position. Um, so if anybody on the planning commission is interested in, in being on the city council, or if you know someone that's interested, you can, uh, have them go to GoddardKS.gov, um, right on the first page, fill out that application and return it by this Friday. Um, and then those applicants are encouraged to be at the meeting next Tuesday to, in case there's any questions from the city council. And essentially, the mayor will then make an appointment, and it will have to be approved by the rest of the city council, but yes, there is a vacancy.
Does that answer that question?
Yeah. Yeah, so no lunches with you and Sam.
You looking, you looking to go sideways?
Or more lunches, depending on your.
Another question I've got, has there been any movement on the land acquisition for new library or property on the road?
Yes, so the city council has approved that too, and that's gone through, um, the city attorney, I believe now is approaching, um, the Perez family and ATSF, um, actually it's BNSF, excuse me, BNSF, to pay the amount necessary for the acquisition of the land at this point. BNSF was under the impression they had already given the land to the Perez family, and the Perez family, there was no records, and so there was some issue there, and so the attorney is basically doing condemnation, which has been approved by council, which basically they would file it in the courts, saying that the city's taking the land, and then the city writes a check and they leave it, and they just say whoever thinks that they should get this check, they should get this check. And then it was determined that BNSF and the Perez should get some money, so they're paying both of them, so that was approved by council, so. I don't know where we are in terms of actually having the title transferred to us, but the city attorney's on that. At some point, we'll.
I've heard about that for a while, so I didn't have to kind of just side note it, or what?
No, it's definitely moving forward, actually, I think it was the last council meeting that, we agreed to that, so for that, for that, the council agreed to that for that cost, to make sure that both parties are happy.
All right. Where's this at?
This is, I wonder, I don't have that, but.
Just go right over here.
East South Street, so if you go south down Main Street, and then you, you go on to Means Park, if you go to Means Park, um, and you're heading east, and you're about to make that turn, I don't know what road that is.
It's between the park and the auto mart shop there.
Yeah, turn it down.
Up on that.
You'll see, uh.
Cut.
Where, the survey stakes, the survey stakes show you where.
Yeah.
They're doing, it's right at the edge of where the disc golf course goes.
Yeah.
You're going on Goddard, you'll see it on the side. It's a buddy linear park on the south side.
Okay. I don't know where to say it.
It's a good piece of land, and, um, yeah, that would be ideal for that.
You're not standing here, plenty of property, sure.
Yeah.
It doesn't say, you know, they're gonna build it up.
No, because we have to, we've had public meetings, and the architect has met with different, uh, parties who had interest on it, including the Lions Club, the library, and other citizens, to try to determine what kind of building layout they want, but there's a lot of different ideas, and so until we get a finalized plan by the architect of what that could look like, we don't know what the cost is, and so it's, it's hard to make that determination right now, but right now we have a land, and then it's just a matter of having the design to have a cost estimate. Okay. Any commissioner comments?
No comments.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
You guys, you got a full day?